Welcome to the Hamilton County Commission Meeting, February 29th, 2024. I'm going to ask the folks to introduce themselves on a dice.
Chrissy Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Ludo, County Administrator.
Michael Freeman, Labor Council.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. I make a motion, oh, we always start our meetings with a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, I have no cards for public comments, so I assume we have no public comment today. So we'll open it up with the Commissioners' comments, and I'll go to Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you, just a couple of things today. I wanted to highlight that we had our delegation lunch this week with the local delegation from the State House, both on the Senate side and the House side. We do this on an annual basis, it was a very productive conversation about a number of different issues that intersect both the county and the state related to property taxes, the convention center, Paycor Stadium. We talked about indigent defense, we talked about the safety complex. And so we have these meetings because we are in partnership with our delegation at the state level, both on the Republican and the Democrat side. So I was glad to participate in that, and I'm glad that we could all attend. We also all attended the Alloy Lunch and Expo that was yesterday. Just a shout out to Harry Blanton and Pat Longo and Catherine Fitzgerald and Greg Forte for doing such a nice job with Alloy. They have really taken that work and launched it in a way that's much more forward-facing, and so I think that's a real benefit to economic development throughout the county. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight something that's coming up, not something that already happened. So I don't know how many of you attend Bockfest, but it is this weekend. So it's, I know, it's a big economic development draw, it's probably my favorite activity to do in the city of Cincinnati. So it runs Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's the annual celebration of spring and the brewing heritage in over the Rhine. And so they've got a number of different locations where they're going to be celebrating the 32nd year for Bockfest, and it's free to everyone. There's a parade, there are many events, and it's all free. So I just wanted to highlight that and make sure that people knew that we'll all be out celebrating spring and our brewing heritage this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Just a few things, of course, the White House briefing that I have on Thursdays after this meeting, and they were talking about all the money that has been left on the table for schools for mental health. And they listed all the states that were receiving money, and they were saying, if your state is not on this list, you're losing out, and Ohio was not on the list. So I'm trying to get more information about how we can get on the list and receive some of the monies. They actually have added 30 to 40 million dollars more for mental health in schools. I had a meeting with Kate Schroeder, who is the Director of Interact for Health, and I was telling her about the mental health dollars that are available. Her and Jill Miller had a webinar with me as regards to youth mental health, and they were very interested. So I'm trying to give them some more information also. Also had a webinar with Mike Morawski, who is a Human Service Commission Director and also a board member for CPS, and just giving me an introduction of what that Human Service Commission does, and how many members are on there, and how he can collaborate with the board. I also had a meeting with the prison library advocacy group, which included two Xavier students, Trina and staff, and we had a very lively meeting about how can libraries, prison libraries, help those returning citizens, of course, before they get here, and where we can get some funding for that effort. So excited about being involved with that. Also attended, as said earlier, the delegation legislative, delegation luncheon. Very interesting to see both sides, I should say, discussing issues during our time, but also talking about what the county is working on. Also had a meeting with Councilmember Albie, who is a new council member, and just talking to her about her vision and mission, and also what mine is, my priorities are. So it was a really good meeting. Also attended the Hamilton County Land Reutilization Corporation Board of Directors meeting. We all attended that to look at where Port Authority and other entities are purchasing land and trying to look at affordable housing even closer, and not just talk about it, but be about it and build some more affordable housing. Attended, as said earlier, the Alloy Annual Luncheon. And also, I am the rep for the Workforce Council of Southwest Ohio, and they have a new director, Beth Yoke is her name. And so they also have a program within that program, a JCG program, which stands for Jobs for Cincinnati Graduates. And I'll be serving as a judge in two areas coming up at the end of the, actually the beginning of the month. And I'd like to just say a couple words about Black History. As you know, this month, we have designated as Black History Month. Technically, they say it's the last day of Black History, but Black History is American history. So I just thought about this morning, as I rose and got ready to come to work, I pulled out my shoes and my clothes, and I thought about Sarah Boone, who invented the ironing board, and Jan E. Matzlinger, who invented the shoe fasting machine. I went to fix my hair with a comb that Walter Salmon's invented. Then I said, well, maybe I'll brush it, which was invented by Lydia O. Newman. I said, I better add some hair products invented by Madame C. Walker. Since it is still early, I said, well, maybe I'll sweep the floor. Use the dustpan invented by Lloyd P. Ray. I decided that I'll mop the floor when I get home, which was invented by Thomas W. Stewart. So I went to work, stopped at several traffic lights invented by Garrett A. Morgan. Before coming into the building, I dropped some mail in the letter drop mailbox invented by Philip Downing. When I arrived, I got on the elevator invented by Alexander Miles. I went into my office, turned on my lamp, which has a filament within the light bulb created by Lewis Howard Latimer. Picked up my pencil, and the lid was broken, and I had to use the pencil sharpener, which was invented by John Love. I also grabbed a fountain pen, which was invented by William Hervis. So that is how my day went until now. There are many, many, many other inventions that I could name, but the purpose is to continue to tell the story that Black History is American history. And that will be my report.
Thank you, thank you very much, that was great. I also participated in with our meeting with the delegation as President of the Board. All three of us were there, and I want to thank the Administration, and I know Mr. Anson kind of led that effort. And we had to collectively select what issues we wanted to meet with the delegation from, that represents us both Democrat and Republican in Columbus. And in there, I want to say that we put number one was property taxes. And we spent a lot of time on it because we know it's a 911 emergency for our Hamilton County homeowners, as well as throughout the state of Ohio. It's a state of Ohio problem. And so what we found, we got some news about, one of, there's several bills that's being introduced, and one that seems to be moving to Conference Committee, and we hope that that moves quickly. I think it was Senate Bill 187. But we were able to talk both from the House and the Senate side, and we expressed that this is a critical issue. We, as a county, we don't have the flexibility we would like to have. We also wanted them to explore a short-term solution to try to stabilize the people right now, who are in their homes struggling to hold on. Because we know when you get to those bills, it gets a lot more, and you've got to pull other things in, school funding, those kind of things, it's a bigger piece. But we know that people, bills are due, or were due now. Another bill will come up in June. And everyone admits that this was, the reassessments were unprecedented in terms of the historical standpoint about how high they have gone up. But what we, we spent a great deal of our time on that, even though we might not have gotten to some of our other subject matters, because we know this is a very, very important issue in stabilization of folks being able to stay in Hamilton County and in Ohio, and not say, I'm going to live in Kentucky and then drive over and get a job, or I'm going to move to Indiana and then drive over and get a job. So just wanted to highlight that we were very intentional about that being the number one item. Of course, we talked about other items, as Vice President Dreehouse has mentioned, that we feel are very important. These meetings have been very good, because I remember last year, we had the delegation meeting, and the, one of our top issues was the gun range issue that is in Evendale but faces and impacts Lincoln Heights and Woodlawn. And out of that, we got some money that helped us. We went in with zero dollars, it came out with a couple million dollars to help from the state. So these meetings are important, and it's great that we're hosting them here, where they get to come to our county, and they get to hear from our board in terms of, these are the issues that we're hearing on the ground, and we need your help. And there's some other issues they also helped us with. But these meetings aren't just, you know, they're not just meetings to grin and smile. We're actually in there trying to work together on how we can have a better partnership on some of the issues, and it helps them understand some of the issues that we're hearing about on the ground. So I was glad to hear that, and I'm hoping that out of that, something positive comes as it relates to the property taxes. One of the things I asked to look into, and I think they're going to talk to our Treasurer as well, is seeing that 5% delinquent fee, and then it goes up to, I believe, 10%. Is there any way we'd have some flexibility? Because that money goes, obviously, to our land bank. And we did have a land reutilization, which is the land bank meeting that we were just at. And it seems like our money is fine over there compared, you know, we passed a budget and it looks like we've got money. If there was a temporary flexibility that would allow us to maybe, you know, take those funds or freeze those funds for this one time as people are trying to gather up the money to be able to pay their property taxes. And Representative Sights, Bill Sights, that might be something they would look at. They're going to talk to our Treasurer and other Treasurer. So we're just, we are trying to find creative ways. But I am pleased that last week, we were able to find some additional ARPA money that we had left over from another fund that we didn't need or didn't utilize. And so therefore, we were able to repurpose it for another 700,000, in addition to the 5 million dollars. So we put in 5.7 million toward mortgage and property tax relief. So we did express that to them. In addition, I had a chance to also be the keynote speaker and talk to students, which I love to do. North College Hill High School had their annual career day, and I was the keynote speaker, and really enjoyed it, and hopefully something I said or shared will help them in their future as they move forward. There were so many great, different careers there for people, for young people to look into and see if they're interested in, and always tell them, you don't have to decide today, and it don't have to be just that. You might want to do something, and then you may want to change. I mean, I wanted to be a professional roller skater. I would have been at the Super Bowl if they had it back in my day, right? But I didn't do, you know, I was so mad they didn't have it when I was like, why? Why wasn't this opportunity available when I was at that age? I could do the splits back then. But understanding that everything is an experience, and you don't know. Just get as many experiences as you can, and then you'll start to find out kind of what you really, what you really love. But you don't have to, if you don't know what you love today, it doesn't matter. And what you love today doesn't have to be the same thing you love down the road. Just get trained and just get experiences. So I was very excited about, and thankful to be invited to speak to them and at their auditorium. So there's a lot of young people. Also, was happy to present a proclamation on behalf of our Board in celebration of Cincinnati City Gospel Mission 100 years, started by Gamble, a Proctor and Gamble, and faith-based. I mean, and it is just great to be at their Women's Center, where they're helping a lot of women with a variety of issues, and it was just great. So I was happy to do that. We were at their Women's Transitional Recovery Center. In addition, I was at the meeting, the FCFC chaired that meeting at the Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services Center, and a lot of great issues there. And let's see, what else did I do? We're going to talk a little bit more, I guess, I don't know if it's on our, I think it's on our agenda, but the GE, or did it make the agenda? GE did not make it, but I did meet with the GE Aerospace folks talking about what happened with their CRA before I got here, where they're going to be doing, what they're going to be doing, and their headquarters in Evendale and those kind of things. So we'll hear, I'm sure, more about that coming up soon. I also met with Heritage Bank Arena. So there's a lot of talk about whether or not to get a new arena, and how would it be? And one of the things they said that years ago, they had presented a proposal. I don't think, maybe, I don't know if any of us were here, but they presented a proposal before people were talking about an arena, and to upgrade and do all those kind of things. I told them I hadn't seen it, probably be great for all of our Board to see it. But as people are looking at an arena, whether or not to have one, not to have one, I hope that they are also talking to the arena, because what I've been hearing is that, it's like, I heard you guys are going to do high rises. They're like, no one's talked to us. So looking forward to hearing more, Mr. Ray Harris and Chip Gerhardt I met with, about what their plans are as it relates to Heritage Bank Arena. And I mean, it is an older arena, so what their plans are for that as well. See if there was anything else. Of course, Alloy was able to give welcoming remarks as the President of the Board, and I was there with my colleagues. And Alloy seems to be really expanding. I mean, they're expanding into Columbus and other areas. But I'm glad that we are expanding here with our Office of Small Business. We're expanding that, we're investing in that. We're investing in a half a million dollars for minority ownership of property, of commercial property. We have a lot of small businesses, but they're renting and they don't own the property. And if they go up on the rent, we lose that whole ecosystem, particularly minority businesses. So I'm glad that we're partnering with Alloy, and that'll be rolling out soon. We'll be rolling out our second annual Small Business Day. We did one last year, we had 1,000 businesses. I'm happy to know that their Small Business Office has helped 2,000 businesses. It's the first time we've had a small, Office of Small Business. It's the right thing to do, and I am excited to us to be able to also leverage their other dollars to help small businesses. A place that's not focused on small business will not be a place of the future. It's just that simple. And so our county, we have to do that, and I want us to be number one in small business. We also have a grant program that'll be rolling out for storefronts. So we have a lot of storefronts in our different villages and townships and cities, and I'm excited to get those storefronts up and going, and that will be rolling out soon. So it was just, it was great to have those small businesses there that won awards, but also looking at how we're leveraging that and expanding for the future. One thing I do want to just also highlight is this whole, people get their evaluations and Board of Revisions. And I did meet with some of my appointees as the President, as the Board is, so I could get a better understanding, like what's going on, what's getting ready to happen. Most people have never gone to the Board of Revisions, didn't even know it existed. Most people have paid their taxes, might have, no, they might have griped a little bit at the grocery store in the aisleways or at the beauty and barber shops, but most part, they came and paid their taxes for many, many years. And for many, this is the first time, they say, wait one minute, this is out of control, I can't afford this, and what are these evaluations? So they've been told that they can appeal at the Board of Revisions, but it's not really just that simple. You have to understand what to bring and what you need, because once you apply, you can't apply for, I think, two years. So if you go and apply and don't have the right paperwork, you're automatically thrown out. And my understanding, you can't come back. So on, hopefully Tuesday, I'm hoping to have somebody come in, and we can use our platform on video to kind of walk through, what do you need to bring? When do you need to bring it? How does it have to be, what's the format? And maybe we can have that video replay, rigid maybe on our website, so then people can come and understand. Don't just call, because once you, once you're saying, you ain't got your paperwork, I'm understanding, you can't come back. And so I want to make sure that people understand, what do you need to bring? How do you do it? Who do you call, so that they don't get frustrated? That was the one thing they brought up to me, that people are applying, they don't have the right paperwork, so they're thrown out, but you can't come back. And for people, this is their first time. And for me is, I don't know the process, so I think it would be helpful. So if anyone were to call my office or what have you, we can give them the right information. And then maybe we can have a one-sheeter or something that could be on our website that people can look at as a checklist, and we can work with the Auditor's Office on that. They may have something. But I'm going to, I just want to tell my colleagues on Tuesday, I want to try to have somebody come in from the Auditor's Office or whomever that can walk us, you know, so then people who are watching, maybe use our platform, here's what you need to bring. My understanding is, we're looking at trying to get some money for appraisals. Mr. Ludo, there is a time limit when people can apply, it's getting ready to come up. So if we're going to do something, we got to kind of move, I just learned about that timeline as well. So I think, at least for me, we're all kind of learning as we're going on this, because I don't think we've ever had, they're talking about 10,000 cases potentially. And so I just think people need to be educated, because they just never tried to access it, never were trying, you know, they, most people just went ahead and paid their thing and kept moving. But this is a first for a lot of people. So I'm going to ask Tuesday, Mr. Ludo, if you can help us, get somebody up here to help walk us through and be able to answer questions, and then people can use that video to help, hopefully help them.
Sure, when we tap the Auditor's Office on that.
Okay, great.
Can I offer something?
Yes, Vice President Dreehouse.
I was talking to somebody about this too, at an event the other night. So the idea that we've got mortgage relief dollars available and dollars available for a reappraisal or for legal help to navigate the process, the challenge is making people know or aware of it before the deadline, which is coming up at the end of March. And so why wouldn't we then go to the Auditor's Office and say, who's in the queue for the BOR? And let those people that are, we know they're going to go through the process, offer them especially the resources for the reappraisal and the legal help to help them navigate the system. So I was going to follow up on that as well, but I guess there's a little bit of lag time there, but not a lot. But the Auditor's Office would have that list, and maybe that should be our target audience, at least for some of this, because these are the people that are already engaging with the county. So I will, I was going to follow up, but maybe if you want to, if you wouldn't mind if you're already placing the call, and maybe we can have a further explanation as to whether or not that can happen through the Auditor's Office on Tuesday.
Yep, that'd be great, yep. Anything we can do, Commissioner?
Yeah, if I could just make a comment, when I had assigned people to the Board of Revision, they would bring me a printout after they perform their duties each week. And, because this is a bigger issue than we know as it relates to who gets approved for revisions, the appraisal cost in one area versus another area. And so I don't know if you want to start getting those printouts as you look deeper into what's really going on as it relates to appraisals and how they're determined, who actually is approved during the revision process for their appeal, and who's not approved in certain areas. It is, it is a big deal, so you might want to get those printouts if they can still do that.
Okay, great, that's a great idea, thank you. And like I said, it was just my first meeting with them, but I will ask for that, it's a good idea, real good idea. Anything else? Okay, Mr. Ludo.
Thank you, Commissioners, no bylaw items today, just a couple of quick comments. Just want to pile on to the Board congratulating Alloy for all their hard work. Thanks to Pat, Harry, Catherine, everyone out there, who's doing fantastic work for economic development in the county. I wanted to also thank, actually, Anson Turley. I think Commissioner Reese, you may have mentioned it, but Anson picked up for the first time the coordination of the delegation meeting agenda and did not skip a beat, and everything went off really well. I thought we had a very productive meeting, so I wanted to thank Anson for pulling that together for us. And finally, just to thank Nick Crossley and his team. We had some potentially severe weather earlier this week that thankfully, at least in this county, didn't amount to much of anything. But better to use this time when we missed, we dodged the bullet to talk about what a great job Nick and his team did. I was getting updates from Nick all throughout the evening as to what was, what was happening or not going to happen, all the way up to very early in the morning with a final text saying, nothing happened last night. So all good, but just, it's good to know that we, and I know the Board is aware of this, because you serve, all of you serve on Nick's Executive Committee, but when everyone else is sleeping, they're watching stuff and making sure that everyone else is safe. So I just wanted to thank Nick and his team for that. Commissioners, that's all I had today.
Awesome, so we will go to the agenda, we have Mr. Engineer.
Good afternoon. Three items today. Item number one is a resolution awarding the bid to, for the Loveland Road Bridge to the low bidder. Bids were accepted on January 11th, Proust Construction Company was the low bidder. The engineer's estimate was 1,221,000, bid amounts 1,374,000, which is in legal limit to award the bid. Funding for this project is 277,598 dollars from an OPWC grant, 366,320 dollars from Claremont County, and 730,756 dollars from Permissive Auto Funds. Item number two is a resolution to go out to bid for 2024 thermoplastic and epoxy pavement striping program. We've been doing this for a number of years. We do epoxy striping for center lines and crosswalks and stop lines. The remainder of the striping gets done in-house, but this is for thermoplastic. We anticipate opening bids on March 28th with the engineer's estimate of 350,000, and the funding will come out of the Road and Bridge Fund. Item number three is one that I'm really excited about. Our office has been working on this with Warren County for over five years, and we're finally at the stage where we're ready to go to construction. This is a resolution authorizing a third amendment between the Hamilton County Engineers' Office and Warren County for the improvements of Fields Erdel Road, from Snyder Road to Wilkins Boulevard. Warren County will be running this project through their TID with Warren County Engineers' Office and the Hamilton County Engineers' Office splitting the cost. This amendment only addresses construction phase, which will allow Warren County Engineers' Office to team with the Warren County Transportation Improvement District to run the project. to team with the Warren County Transportation Improvement District to run the project. This is one of those projects where we've been able to leverage our money quite a bit. The total construction cost is close to $17 million. We've been able to get $5.9 million from an OKI grant, $3.3 million from a Hamilton County OPWC grant, $800,000 from a Warren County OPWC grant. The Hamilton County Permissive Auto Funds will provide $2 million, and the remaining four and a half million dollars will come from Warren County. So I'm really proud of my, my staff for, for all the work they've done to leverage the dollars in basically a $17 million project where we're only putting in just over $3 million.
Okay, we will open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
No, I just want to comment on the last statement that you made, Eric. Congratulations on that. It sounds like a, a financial stack that will definitely benefit the residents of Hamilton County, so thank you.
As well as Warren County, yes.
As well as Warren County.
You didn't have to say that. Yeah, that's going there, you didn't have to, no, I'm just kidding. Okay, Commissioner.
Just a general question, Eric. I heard you say on item one, permissive auto funds is $700,000 plus.
Yes.
And I was just wondering, do you have a formula that you use to say how much we're going to use out of our fund versus the other entities, OPWC?
Well, when we apply for an OPWC grant, you can apply for up to 90%. We, the way the scoring is done on the projects, the more local money you put in, the higher you get scored. So we kind of look at it as a grantsmanship thing, how, how we can best obtain the grants. So we put in as much money or as little money as we can to be able to get the grant.
That helps.
And it changes, it varies on each project.
I heard the difference, yeah. That's all I had.
You okay with it? Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve item one through three.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, next we have MSD.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lauren DiGarcia for MSD. Just have a couple items on the agenda this afternoon, starting with item number four. This is legislation to authorize certification of delinquent MSD sewer charges in the amount of $1,787,867.99 against a property parcel located at 5177 Spring Grove Avenue. This MSD customer is a large industrial user that is reportedly shutting down its operations of its plant. These delinquent charges have mostly accrued since mid to late 2023. So they're not terribly delinquent at this point, but we do feel it's advisable, given that they're shutting down their operations, to certify them to the property at this time, secure the debt, and improve our chances of getting payment of that. So moving on to item number five, this is for the Spring Oak Drive Local Sewer Project, which will provide sanitary sewer service to 17 properties in Green Township. This one has been moving through the public hearing and legislative process for some time now. The board adopted a resolution to proceed with construction of this project on January 25th, so just about a month ago. There is a mandatory 10-day waiting period for any appeals. So that time has elapsed and there haven't been any appeals affected. So at this point, the, the resolutions before you today are likely, hopefully, the last piece of legislation needed to construct the project, and they are to appropriate construction funds as well as authorize the city to advertise for bids. We are requesting $1,276,276 for construction phase funding. So recommend approval of both, and you can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for the report. On item number four, who is the property owner?
It is, so it's, I would say it's best known as St. Bernard Soap Company, but the property owner is actually C A I Investments.
So the, the number that you quoted as the delinquent number is a very high number, given the activity in that, on that property. So I'm wondering, since they're delinquent and they've been delinquent, what, so you, you go, you, you make them aware of the delinquency they have not paid. What happens then? I mean, is it such a large dollar amount? Are you optimistic that we will get these dollars from them? Or what, what's the process here?
So I mean, ideally, the property will be transferred and we hope to be paid at that point in time. It's, it's a question of priority of the debt and how it gets paid. And when these utility charges are assessed to the property, it gives a very high priority, so that gives us a better chance of being paid compared to other debts.
Okay, so you're optimistic that that will happen as the transfer takes place?
Yes, we are hopeful. Yes, and I'll just add, I mean, we've been here on a couple other properties over the past couple of years, and we have been successful. I know we did a multifamily property which transferred, and that was paid in full. We've been working on Karoo Tower, which is, is still in process, but you know, we are receiving payments on it. So this mechanism of collecting these delinquent charges has been successful in the past.
It functions like a lien?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
I thought I heard you say that the delinquency was not that high. I'm thinking that's pretty high.
I think I said that it's not terribly delinquent in that they were just, they just accrued mid to late last year, and there's a little bit of lag time, you know, when you use the services, you're billed for the services, you have a period of time to, to pay, and then they become delinquent. So no, I, I, I'm on the same page that it's a very large number.
Yeah, because listen, that can't be the soap company. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify on that, that's all I had, yeah.
Thanks, yeah, just following up on that part. Because we had Karoo Tower, we have this. And when a homeowner is delinquent, it seemed like they get shut down immediately. Like it doesn't give a long lag time. So I'm trying to think, what is the, what is the rule? Homeowner, if they don't pay, is it 30 days they're shut off or 90 days? Or how do, how do you handle that versus a commercial property? Because you like Karoo Tower go forever.
Right, I mean, we have multiple billing entities. I believe there's approximately nine, Waterworks is the largest one. So I mean, I can't speak to all of their processes. But this particular property is billed by Waterworks, and in the residential context, I think they're very willing to work with people, especially during COVID, you know, they weren't doing shut offs. They started the Promise Pay Program, are very willing to work with people to get into payment plans. And as long as they're trying to pay it off, we'll work with them to try and get caught up. So I don't have a timeline.
I understand, we had a COVID now, everybody was handling COVID. And then after COVID, I mean, we don't, went up on the prices. And I mean, everybody's complaining. I mean, I was at church, and they start complaining. I wanted to go under the pews, but they started complaining. My point is, I've been noticing these big companies, they get a year or two years, they ain't paying. We gotta have the same one set of rules. I mean, they should be, I understand you said it was 2023, it was a couple months behind, but if you, a homeowner and you're 2023 behind, you don't hardly have no water running right now.
Sure.
So I'm trying to figure out, how do we get a system of one set of rules? I mean, it's $1.8 million, and the senior citizen, we running them down for $150.
Right, I hear what you're saying. I will add one more somewhat unique thing about, about this property. So they don't use, they do see, receive some water from Cincinnati Waterworks, but they receive a lot of water through a private source, a well on the property. So shutting them off would not necessarily impact them the way shutting off a residential property or any other property that's solely served by a public water utility.
Well, I'm not talking about just shutting them off, I mean, Karoo Tower is a big, I mean, that thing went on and on, I can't even imagine a homeowner, and I'm not here to go after Waterworks or whoever, I'm just saying whoever does the billing, we can't have Karoo Tower can go a year, two years and not paying nothing. And we said, we working with them, we working with them. And grandma, you ain't working with her, or you ain't working with, it don't even have to be grandma, the working family, you ain't working with them the same way. They don't get a whole year, and I'm not saying this to you, I'm just, I don't know, I don't know who's making the rules, but we got to find some new rules. That's all I'm saying, we got to find new rules. It can't be, what we're doing today, of course, is a lien, if you sell it, we'll get some money, if you sell it. If you don't sell it, I don't know, you know, you'll keep going after them with a bill. But I just don't understand that, these homeowners, we so quick to, you know, they on a monthly billing. If you miss this month and this month, they own you. They after you, they cutting you off. So how's Karoo Tower going on and on and on? Well, we're working with them, we're getting there. I want the same type of work with the average citizen that's out here. That's working every day, trying to struggle and put these two nickels together to try to keep their little piece of American dream. It just seems odd for us that these big conglomerates can go months and months and months, and we're working with them. And, you know, the family in Hamilton County, they got 30 days, or they gonna get hit with something. So I'm just trying to figure out how to have one set of rules, especially when they got, you know, that's $1.8 million, that's a lot of money. You know what I'm saying? And Karoo Tower is lots of money. And homeowner, $150, we ready to, they out here got to figure it out. And that's what I'm just trying to figure out how we can, how, who, who controls that billing process and makes these decisions that, one, we gonna work with these, but we ain't gonna work with them? And how do we get one set of rules? So that's just my thought, I don't know. Commissioner Dumas, you had your light on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment, I mean, it should be fairly easily, easy to find out. I would imagine that PUCO would have some, the Public Utilities Commission probably has some guidelines on commercial versus residential. And we can find out what those guidelines are, but it certainly seems very unfair to handle it the way it's not a local thing, but I wouldn't think it was local. But Jeff can find that out, I'm sure.
Yeah. Is it local? I think it's local, that's why we voting on it, right?
Yeah, so the, the billing process for Waterworks, I do not believe is handled directly through PUCO. That would be the case if it was like Duke Energy, et cetera. But this is mostly handled, the billing for, as Lauren indicated, the billing for Metropolitan Sewer District is handled primarily through multiple other local entities, the largest of which is Greater Cincinnati Waterworks. So it's going to be the policy of the city and Waterworks that carries in terms of how they do their, their billing, not directly. The Sewer District, though, the Sewer District is kind of a writer on, on this as well in terms of collecting its, its bills through, through Waterworks's processes.
So it should be easier to find out why commercial is different than residential.
Yeah, so we can, we can, so we can find out what the current process is. Lauren, I think was mentioning some of it, but what's the current process on residential shut offs versus commercial, that type of thing? So we can get the board a brief staff report on that.
Thank you. I just said, because we're seeing this more often than, at least for me. I'm like, we were at Karoo Tower, now we down, deal with this building. I understand, put the lien on it, I'm, I'm all for that. But I just don't know how we get this kind of a backup in terms of the amount that's owed.
Sure, we can work on gathering some information from the billing entities on that.
Okay, great, I appreciate that. Vice President Drehouse, anything? Okay, I will make a motion to approve items four and five.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aludo, we go to the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda, Commissioners, the first item is number six. It's a budget adjustment, budget adjustment number seven in your packet. This is for 6.45 million, million dollars. This is paying the election expenses for the zoo levy out of the zoo levy funds itself. There's dollars in here for the Metropolitan, I'm sorry, for the Mental Health Recovery Services Board for managing the alternative interventions contract for adult probation. There's a QRT grant for the prosecutor's office. There is supplemental appropriations for various engineer projects in Green Township and Corrine Township. There is a furniture purchase in the clerk of courts office and a, some grant movements within the coroner's office as well. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Mower Max as a replacement for the engineer's office, is a $260,000, I believe. These are the big pieces of equipment you see on the side of the road. They have the boom arm that come off to, that mow the, the side of the, side of the roadways and highways, et cetera. Hence the large dollar amount there. Item number eight is a resolution awarding an agreement to Buckeye Construction and Restoration Company for $459,000. This is for concrete and waterproofing on the South Plaza at Paycor Stadium. Item number nine is a then and now, this is a, for $2,550. This is all through county facilities. This was for emergency repair of two boilers at the youth detention center. Item number 10 is the award to the engineer's office for road paint for $196,000 to Sherwin, Sherwin-Williams. Item number 11 is the, an agreement through the Hamilton County Solid Waste Management District for waste reduction programming. This is with the Cincinnati Health Department. This is for their Healthy Communities Freezer Program that they're implementing to help reduce food waste. Then we have several J F S items. We have the bid awards and contracts authorized by the J F S director in the amount of $378,000, is item number 12. We have several items to Lighthouse Youth Services. These all just coincidentally kind of came through at the same time. We don't normally see this many agreements from one entity on at the same time. But the contracts all just were approved at the same time. We have, item number 13 is for Independent Living Services, $3 million. We have $1.2 million for group home services, $6.4 million will be for foster care services, and $800,000 for crisis stabilization and shelter care services. Then we have an agreement with Berkshire. Item number 17 is an agreement with Berkshire Farm Center for $200,000 for foster care services. A renewal of an agreement with Youth Villages, Inc. for residential treatment services at $201,000. We have an agreement with the clerk of courts to support child support enforcement case filings at $70,970. We have an agreement, actually renewal number one, Bear, with the Bear Foundation, for $448,000 for foster care services. And item number 21 is a item requesting authorization to travel at the county's expense for six employees in the county engineer's office to Hamilton, Ohio.
Thank you. I want to go back to item number six, I believe, budget adjustment. And on here, I just had a question. So for the zoo levy, in order to have it on the, on the ballot, is $321,154.43. And that comes out of the levy, now that it's passed, however much money we get from the levy, this comes out of it?
That's correct.
Okay, now my question is, did we already get, like, when it's passed, are we getting that money right away? Or are we gonna front load this money and then get repaid?
So this would just come out of the balance of the levy?
Okay.
It's already there, so this, we didn't have to wait for collections as we just come out of the balance and be paid to board the line for the costs.
And then this cost, is this a, it's interesting, because it's down to 43 cents. What is this? I didn't know it cost us $321,000 to put this on the ballot. I mean, the Board of Elections charges you to have it, so what are they charging for?
I believe it's mostly for staffing costs, printing, ballot printing costs. So they divide up the costs and, and apportion those off to the different entities that place something on the ballot. This is a little bit higher than we normally see. Last year, last year was an odd year, odd numbered year, so we didn't have a lot of different things on the ballot, so the costs were not apportioned over a lot of different issues. So that's why this one's probably a little bit higher than what we normally see.
Got you, so this is a good learning thing. To put it on the Board of Elections, everybody got a cost. But it's, it's good to understand, so, because I thought that was a high number, like $321,000 to put this on the ballot. But you're saying that the more is on the ballot, the more they can cut up, this group pays for this, this group pays for that.
To some degree, because some of the costs are gonna be higher with more stuff on there to some degree as well. But this is a little bit higher than, I don't have the, the numbers there to, to back this completely, but the number seems a little bit high to me as well, so I would imagine that's the reason.
Okay, all right, I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
No questions?
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. I don't know if Laura is on the line, Laura, for J F S?
Is she there, Christie?
I just had a question. We always ask whether or not it's a new provider, and also I'm concerned about whether or not our providers are local versus taking our children out of the state or out of the county. So just wondering if number 18, if this was a new provider?
I don't know if you're able to get Laura on, I can't see.
Yeah, she just put the unmuted up there.
Okay, there she is, okay.
I was talking, and I looked up, and it's like, oh, I'm still muted. Apologize, Commissioner Dumas, yes, item number 18 with youth.
Yes, item number 18 with Youth Villages, is that what you're?
Yes.
Yeah, that is a single-source residential. There are times that we do have to place out of our community due to the special needs of kids. Local providers or network providers aren't able to, to meet their needs. So, yeah, there's currently two youth at that placement, and it is in Tennessee, but it is a place that accepted for specific needs of these two kiddos.
In Tennessee, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and there's one other one with Berkshire Farm that is another single, or that one is actually a sole source, and that is a sibling set that's placed with a relative in New York State, and that parent, the, the relative is a licensed foster care provider with Berkshire Farm. So, okay?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Oh, look, I'm already there, walking. All right, well, I make a motion to approve and accept for the record items six through 21.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Jimmison?
Yes. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Jimmison?